Morning, everybody. It's 10:00 AM on July 26, 2022, almost August. Can you believe it? And we're in the meeting room, the Story County Admin Meeting, and I'm going to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Our chair is in transit today. She's traveling back from National Association of Counties Conference, so I'm cheering today. And I would like to invite you to join us if you'd like. My pleasure, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, "One Nation, Under God, and Indisultable with Liberty and Justice for All." Thank you, everybody. We're going to take a motion for adoption of today's agenda. So move. Second. Edmonds.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda is adopted. Next, we have public comment number one, and this is for the public to address topics that are on today's agenda. If you're in the meeting room and you would like to address us, please come forward here to this table, or if you're on Zoom, I think star nine should unmute you. So is there anybody who would like to make public comments today on anything that's on today's agenda? Hearing and hearing none, I will move on to agency reports. We have a report submitted by Storytime Childcare, and it's just a submitted report. I understand they're not going to be here today to address this, so we'll accept that report. And we'll go on. We have a confirmation recognizing August 2022 as Water Quality Month in Story County.
Whereas National Water Quality Month is dedicated to protecting bodies of clean water, such as lakes, rivers, groundwater, aquifers, and streams. And whereas even though water makes up 70% of the Earth's surface, only around 3% of the water supply is freshwater, with 1% of which is easily accessible. And whereas clean water is essential to our health, agricultural needs, and our environment, and...
Whereas implementing conservation practices in urban and rural areas can improve soil homes and water quality. And whereas virtually everything on our planet lies on clean water. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do our bicycle plan August 2022 as Water Quality Month in Story County. Protect our waters for years to come. We encourage everyone to continue best practices like picking up after pet, disposing of chemicals correctly, and using the right amount of fertilizer. I approve the confirmation. Second. Edmonds.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Confirmation is adopted. I'm going to take a little bit of liberty here and just talk a little bit more about water quality, because Story County has, in the past several years, done a lot to assess the quality of water and the best practices in our watershed. Sarah Carmichael, we hired last year, is our watershed coordinator. And I'll tell you why that's important. I was recently watching Market to Market, and somebody from the University of Iowa said on a segment, "If I was going to have a voluntary nutrient reduction strategy for water quality, we need volunteers." So I'm particularly looking at Sarah right now in this room, because she has been working with a lot of volunteer landowners this past year to implement edge field practices. This fall, we're going to put in several edge field practices, saturated buffers, and bioreactors. I would encourage anybody who's a landowner and who wants to do more on water quality to contact Sarah Carmichael at the Conservation Department. Also on our website, under the Board of Supervisors tab, if you go to Plans and Projects, there's a little square called Countywide Watershed Assessment. You can go to that and look at the watershed assessment that was done a few years ago of all the watershed that happens to be in Story County. There's also a link to the watershed assessment for the Iowa Creek, which flows into Story County. So there are a lot of things that we can do, and there are a lot of things that we need to do to help our water quality. So I would encourage everybody to get involved and learn more. Thanks. So next, we have consideration of minutes, July 19.
I approve the consented.
Second.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes are adopted. Now, consideration of personnel actions.
I approve the work personnel actions as presented.
Second. Edmonds.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions are approved. Next is consent agenda.
I approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second. Edmonds.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda is approved. Next on the agenda normally is public hearing items. We do not have any. After that, we do additional items, and our engineer Darren Moon wants to address us regarding a purchase order. Good morning, Darren.
Good morning. I couldn't hear you. What did you say this item was for?
This is the total
The patch.
Patch of vortex. Landowner.
This, this is a budgeted item we had for purchases this year. It just came in a little higher, like most things are these days, but there's a couple of reasons for that I wanted to explain. First of all, we budgeted $75,000 for this patch out of this year. Came in at $94,800. Most of that's due to just plain old cost increases. We had an estimate six months to nine months ago, and it was like $9,000 or $10,000 cheaper. It's just a steel. It's all made out of steel, so that's why their quote's only good for 14 days. You see on the bottom, it says, "Material costs are fluctuating so much, they can only give 14 days on their quotes." Anyway, so that's the main reason for the increase, but that's kind of an added bonus. We didn't realize when we budgeted for this, these new ones come with an air compressor on them. And we do have an air compressor already, but it's 27 years old. It's a very rough shape. This will replace that as well. We paid $8,000 for that ago, so that'll be an added bonus that'll do away with that piece of equipment as well, so.
Just not as bad as it looks.
Not quite as bad, and there's some extra benefits of this one over what we have now. Our current patcher's about 21 years old, and it's, it's been gone for a month and a half straight this summer, but we've had a lot of issues with it getting clogged, and it's getting to that age, it needs replaced. And this new one adds some extra capabilities, doing some crack sealing and stuff like that, so. Yeah, it'll be a nice new tool for it. It's something we use a lot.
Do you know what the turnaround is? Is this approved when you get it?
I believe they said this was, I think, three or four months, which is better than most things.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Not the year, plus, it's your choice. Yes.
I don't have any questions. It's good to know that we're getting an $8,000 bonus and now $19,000 extra, so that does make it look not as bad. That was probably going to happen anyway.
Yeah.
Any ten motion?
I approve the purchase order for the 2022 total patch of vortex from Hamilton Incorporated for $94,805.47.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none. Edmonds.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved.
Thank you.
Do you have another one? The SS4A grant application. Do you want to talk about that now, too?
Sure. We have a resolution to approve participation in the SS4A grant. This got a little more complicated, which I'll get to in a second, but starting from scratch here, there's a number of new competitive grants in the federal transportation bill. There's the bridges one and the safety one. This is the safety one, the SS4A. So what the County Engineers Association did immediately is we formed a committee, and we decided the best way to go about this one was to do all 99 counties in one application, because all of these grants require an action plan to be in place before you can even apply for the next step, which is the actual funding for projects. So all 99 counties need an action plan. So we worked with the DOT. There's a 20% match. We worked with the DOT, and we're pretty sure they're going to be able to supply that 20% match with some safety funds they have. So there will be no cost to the 99 counties for this application. So we thought this was going to be a no-brainer. Go ahead and get all, all 99 counties have to take action by the board to get the application in. Then we had our SERPA, which is our RPA meeting last week, and there was concerns from the cities within the SERPA region that if the counties submit applications, that they will, it will hurt their chances of submitting applications, because what they call duplication, they overlap the cities and the counties. That is one of the stipulations they have in the grant funding fact sheet, is they said you could be, that could hurt you if you have some overlapping applications. I I still feel like today, we just need to go ahead and approve this. It's not really binding or anything, so we can always back out of it. We're on a pretty short timeframe. We're, the questionnaire went out, there's 18 RPAs in Iowa. Only one of them have come back and said they've even talked about it. So there's a lot to be worked out there in a short timeframe. I don't see that getting done, but if it does get done, and we determine it's better for us to back off and apply through the RPA instead, we can do that still in my mind. This isn't binding us to anything, but it'd be nice to get this approved and in place. We're going to move forward with the county application side.
Could you explain what the acronym SERPA and RPA are for anybody who might be listening in this meeting?
Sure. The RPAs are, really what they're set up for is to divvy up the federally funding that comes to the state. The RPA is a regional planning affiliation. SERPA is what our, we're Region 11 out of 18, and it's called SERPA. That's
Central Iowa.
Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Authority or Agency.
I can't remember what the English, and that's why I asked you.
Sure. So there's RPAs, 18, and then there's MPOs. They're the bigger cities, and we have an MPO in Story County, which is Ames, and then there's a Des Moines MPO. I believe the MPOs can still apply on their own, and that doesn't have the conflict that the RPAs do, because I'm sure Ames will be applying as well. The other issue with this type of funding, in particular, safety, it's almost all based on that action plan. They look at the fatalities in the county, and then I think they get somewhat into the major injuries, but they don't go beyond that. I did a quick look in Story County of fatalities, especially in the cities, and there was almost none. Slater had one in the past 10 years. I believe that was the 4th of July accident on the street. So beyond that, there was next to no fatalities, and so I think the city's going to have a hard time getting funding. Ames is separate. They had seven fatalities in the past 10 years, is what I show for Ames, so they did have some, but they're going to plan.
So the counties grouping together would help, because they would be looking at statewide statistics in all 99 counties?
Well, no, this, this first grant would get an action plan for each individual county, so they'd be looking at our county alone. We're just grouping together just to get all 99 done, and then the next phase would be next year. After we have a plan in place, then we can apply. Has to be in that plan, a safety issue that needs to be addressed, that's in the plan. It's the only thing eligible for funding. And even at the county level, we're not going to have too many spot locations. North Dakota is probably the first one on my mind. There's been a couple fatalities there, but I don't know if the board knows the history there. We've already tried to improve that road, and it didn't go anywhere. Along that stretch did not want
Previous for the
Anything to do with the current. So that could be probably our highest priority coming out of this plan. Beyond that, there's not a lot of spot locations that have high accident and fatality records right now. I would say, if we do pass this resolution, I mentioned before, another issue we've had with these big grants is one county has to take the lead, and Winnishee County has agreed to take the lead for this, but there's no funding involved, so it's easier than the bridge grant. They're going to be a lot more difficult, because the county's going to have to take responsibility for the entire fund amount.
So they just be doing the grant and then reporting, but not fiscal?
No. That, no, there wouldn't be anything necessary for fiscal, so it makes it easier.
I was really surprised when that SERPA call, that it went that way. I thought, oh, my gosh, if that people would have thought about that beforehand, but what we decided on that was just wait a week and how.
The SERPA was going to look into it more, get back to us, and I know it's going through the County Engineer Association, too, and I haven't heard of so far a lot of reasoning not to go forward with the countywide one. So we have a deadline. August 9 would be the last board meeting that the county would need to approve this resolution by, but in my opinion, we should just go ahead and do it today and have it done with, and we can always back out of it.
Any questions? I don't have any further questions. I have to go. So, thanks for your report last week on this.
Sure.
Good to know some of what they were talking about when that came up on SERPA. Is there, I have no other questions either.
We have 08 for participation in the SS4A grant application.
I second that motion. Edmonds.
Aye.
Merkin, aye.
Thank you.
Yeah. The other thing this brings, it just brings to mind, I just must have them quickly, is everybody says, well, there's federal money available. Just go get some federal money. I think this points out that just going to get federal money is not always that easy. You know, they have, you know, you've got the whole federal bureaucracy to deal with, and you've got the statistics, and they say, this is what they're looking at. And I know if it seems fishy, like on some bridge things, and what money's really going to come down to county level, and we're just going to have to, and I want to thank you for continuing to look at that and stay, stay abreast of what's going on there, but.
Yeah, everybody's kind of in the same boat. It's kind of mass confusion, but everybody's kind of, well, you've got to at least try to go after it, even though chances might not be that great. You got to try, but at some point, it might come, it gets expensive enough to even apply with consults and everything. We might have to weigh those options, but this one sounds like a no-brainer. It's no cost.
Last you go, already, I need to present is that some of those federal dollars, we might not be eligible for the SERPA projects, aren't large enough
Yeah.
To go after some of those, so money may be out there, but it not necessarily be for eligible for capturing those spots.
Well, you brought that up. Another thing, we talked about SERPA is a big part of this safety grant, is underserved census tracts. And SERPA, they did a check on the underserved census tracts in the RPA region, which is the counties, and there wasn't a single census tract in that region in the RPA. There's probably some in the city, MPOs, but not in the RPAs, so we're not going to score very high on that category, so that's unfortunate as well, but you might hear that term come up, applying for some of these grants.
So none of the SERPA counties and the incorporated areas have any census tracts?
Single one.
Well, that's discouraging. Thanks for keeping up with that. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, next, we have Conservation Director Mike Cox to talk about Hennessy Mill Dam. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Well, as you know, we've been working for, for some time on trying to find a solution to mitigate the lowhead dam that we commonly refer to as Hennessy Mill Dam on the Scum River across from me to Hayden. So we have been working on that for, for some time now. We engaged engineers with Houston Engineering to do some analysis and do some conceptual designs. They have come back with some, with some concepts that were considered by the Conservation Board at their meeting last month, and the board did not make a decision on it, tabled the, the action, and based on discussion at that meeting, it was decided that we needed to come back with another, another iteration of the design that hopefully we can get all landowner support on. And so the purpose of this action this morning is to ask for your approval to move ahead, to engage the engineers again, to take a look at a, at a new design, if you will, that based on, again, the communication at that board meeting, we are very hopeful that we can get, get full agreeance from the landowners to move forward with that design.
Be hopefully considerable as expensive than the last thing we looked at.
We would, we would hope that, and I think there is some, some legitimate potential for this design revision to be less expensive than the than the, the previous one that was discussed. So we do have the discussion at the board meeting really kind of focused around the, what we've referred to as a rock riffle design, which is, has a cost estimate of somewhere around $730,000 for mitigation. Our hope is that we can make some, make some adjustments to that design to accommodate some, some of the fisheries concerns that were brought up, as well as some of the landowner concerns that were brought up. And our, our hope is that this new design then would come in below that, that cost estimate. So as you know, we don't have, we don't have any funding budgeted for this project. We do have a grant, a grant available, or grant application process available, and that would need to be submitted by September 16, I believe is the date. So our hope is to get all of that back, have it considered at the September Conservation Board meeting in order to get a grant submission for, for that grant, that grant cycle.
Match on that.
Don't pull me on that. I can't, I cannot think of it. There is a match. I can't think of it off the top of my head, so I hesitate to say.
So it sounds like your time for this, you can't do this contract, help them start looking at it now?
Correct.
Or the potential for that grant application for September?
Correct, correct. I know that there's, and that is a state dam mitigation grant, lowhead dam mitigation, and they have $500,000 available. Our hope would be to be successful with an application of that.
Yeah.
They have $500,000 available.
Well, I know you've been working on this for a long time. I think you've both attended some meetings, yeah, a couple of years ago even.
At the library, I think you were both there, very appreciative of that. You saw that it was a very good turnout for a public, a public meeting on this, and we continue to struggle with finding that right solution that works for everybody.
There should be a lot of interest from those meetings, folks wanting something addressed.
Of what?
There should be, at those meetings, there are a lot of people that are very interested to want something addressed, to address the safety.
Correct, correct, correct. Yeah, it, it remains to be a very heavily sought mitigation project.
Sure.
Yeah.
So I haven't, you mentioned in the documentation here, but the funding for this additional engineering work would come out of the Energy Transfer Fund, which we have, have the capacity to do that.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you. Continue with on this. The entertaining motion.
I make the motion that we approve additional alternative analysis with Houston Engineering Incorporated for the Hennessy Mill Dam for $5,000 to accompany it.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none. Edmonds.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we go on to department reports. Anna Henderson, Director of Animal Control. Good morning.
Good morning. So, beginning of the second quarter, did keep shelter staff busy and not with intakes. We didn't have very high animal intakes, but we were able to focus on a few other things, such as group volunteer opportunities with Renewable Energy Group and the owner of Plucky Paws and her volunteer helpers, activities they accomplished for animal socialization, enclosure cleaning, small tasks around the shelter, like some landscaping and organization, as well as some donated pool and pool toys for the dogs, which some of them enjoyed, some of them did not. We were also able to participate in an adoption event at Carpet One, and with animal adoptions seeming to slow down, the shelter staff will be finding ways to have more adoption events like that, hopefully to gain a greater reach for more of our adoptable animals. We hope to reach more people and expand our foster program to include more foster-to-adopt homes or mini vacations. This is where an approved foster home fosters an adult cat or dog for a few weeks or weekend to give the animal a break from the shelter life, and some of those could turn into permanent homes as well. We held our first ever Kids Learning Day for interested youth in our community. We had the kids participate in different activities centered around animal, animal shelter education. And a big thank you to the volunteers who helped where needed during that day, and we look forward to having other events like this one in the future. Shelter staff enjoyed an afternoon of professional development with Erin Top and learned about dog body language and defensive handling. We also had two staff members complete their ACO1 certification, and one staff member complete ACO2 certification through the National Animal Care and Control Association. In the coming months, we are going to continue to find ways to gain more interest in foster homes, adoptions, and volunteer opportunities. I will be looking into microchipping our adoptable animals before adoption, as well as potential microchip clinics. And kitten season finally did catch up with us, and last week, we took in a total of 21 animals in three days. Chase and Tails, one of our biggest fundraiser, fundraiser opportunities, we held this September 17, and we're excited to collaborate again for the eighth year with them. And that's, that's all we have. Any questions?
That's for your report. I don't think I have that.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much.
Green cats?
Something.
Just don't let
You know, some sort of flowers, something for us to learn about. Lummies, kittens, something.
You're saying we need to widen up the meeting. So next on the agenda is other reports. We have none. Upcoming agenda items. I don't have any yet. Okay. Next, then, we'll go on to public comment number two. Comments from the public on items that are not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on any comments due to requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. So I will open public comment number two. Is there anybody wishing to make a comment? See anybody in the room and on Zoom, either raise hand or star nine to unmute. Not seeing anybody. Are you brush? Okay, off those public comment section, sex, and we will talk about liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements through supervisor. Supervisor Edmonds, do you want to start?
Sure, September 7, tomorrow. I'll be a little late. I just have a dental appointment in the morning, and I'm going to take in the, there's a pipeline webinar, the role of supervisors, so I will do that. Thursday morning, that kind of a conflict type of meeting, and then also Alberta, Alberta just doesn't have forums, so they're trying to read just the timelines so that we have a forum. And then I have the CICS meeting in the afternoon. I'm here all day Friday as well. May it's August 1st already.
How does that occur? Let's, let's pretend it doesn't.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Has some meetings this afternoon, also some meetings tomorrow morning in April, then also going to sit through the pipeline webinar again, and some meetings again, and themes on Thursday, and I don't think that is a Zoom webinar on the startup, so that looks interesting. So mostly Zoom meetings and personal meetings with people for the rest of the week, one on one. So mostly Zoom meetings and personal meetings with people for the rest of the week, one-on-ones on various issues. I will be probably not in the office a lot because my meetings are pretty much out, but will be available. So that is all I have. I second that. Heads.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We are adjourned in thirty minutes.